Okay, are you joining me in saying the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and welcome to the Board of Trustees for the Schooltown Speedway's October 13th meeting. And tonight, we will be operating from a 12-item agenda. The first item is to approve last month's meeting's minutes.
Now, when they approve the meeting minutes from the September 8, 2020 meeting?
Thank you, Debbie and Tom.
I'm excited.
Thank you so much. All in favor of approving last month's minutes? Indicate by raising your hand. Awesome. Thank you. That passes 5-0. The second item on our agenda is to approve a resolution to transfer amounts from the Education Fund to the Operations Fund on a recurring monthly basis beginning January 31, 2021.
As President, thank you. This action allows the treasurer to transfer funds from the Education Fund to the Operations Fund to pay for expenses charged to the Operations Fund, which were previously charged to the Education Fund. Remember, we used to have just a general fund. We divided those two things up. This would include, but not limited to, expenses for the district administration, custodians, utilities, and supplies. This statement of manner which demonstrates how much state funding is dedicated to something other than the classroom and the education of students. My recommendation is to approve this transfer. And there's resolution to transfer from the Education to Operations.
What's the word? Pleasure?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution to transfer monies from the Education Fund to the Operations Fund on a recurring monthly basis as of January 31, 2021.
Wonderful. Do we have a second? Thank you, Debbie. Any discussion on this? Then the vote. All in favor of approving this resolution? Indicate by raising your hand, please. And that passes 5-0. The next item is very similar. It is to adopt a resolution to transfer amounts from the Operations Fund to the Education Fund before December 31, 2021. Should that be '21 or should that '20?
Next year, '21. Yeah, this is for next year. This allows the treasurer to transfer those funds from the Operations Fund to Education Fund to pay expenses in the Education Fund, which were previously charged in the Capital Project Fund. These are, for example, as educational software expenses. My recommendation is to approve this resolution.
Your word's pleasure on this. Tom?
I'll move that we approve or adopt the resolution to transfer amounts from the Operation Fund to the Education Fund before December 31, 2021.
Okay. No, thank you. Any discussion on this? Then all in favor of adopting this second resolution? Indicate by raising your hand, please. And that also passes 5-0. Let me just say that, for those of you who are wondering where I'm getting 5, one of our board members is present with us via Zoom. And so I can see Luke Bickel right here, and I can then count his vote. The fourth item is to adopt a resolution to transfer amounts from the Referendum Fund to the Education Fund before December 31, 2021.
This last routine action, this will allow our treasurer to transfer funds for Referendum Fund to the Education Fund to pay expenses in the Education Fund, which were previously charged to the Referendum Fund. These expenses associated with the extracurricular activities, such as coaches, academic coaches, band, choir, and clubs. My recommendation is to approve this resolution.
Bill?
I move we adopt a resolution to transfer amounts from the Referendum Fund to the Education Fund before December 31, 2021.
Awesome. Do I have a second? Look, look a second. Look, I see ya. Luke is seconding that. Thank you. Any discussion on this? Okay, then all in favor of adopting this resolution to transfer from the Referendum to the Education before the end of next year? Indicate by raising your hand, please. And that passes 5-0. We are done with adopting resolutions. Fifth item on the agenda is to review the school improvement plans. How, what order are we doing with this?
Each year, each school must come up with a school improvement plan that they have to have published by October. We have, we have done that. We've uploaded those to the, to the Indiana Department of Education. What you're going to hear tonight is a one-page summary of those school improvement plans. And I think we'll start with Dr. Wolf, and she's going to give a summary of the elementary school improvement plans. I will be giving the junior high school improvement plan summary, and Mr. Zarman will be talking about the high school summary. So, Dr. Wolf.
Oh, my sound wise, okay. I am representing all four elementary, and my colleagues are here. So, you're trying to share kind of a lot of things that you have in common. And the one big thing we haven't found in this year is we really don't have any data for our children. So, the only real piece of data we got through before the shutdown was our EDA testing. And again, that's a population that you have seen grow every year, and it continues to grow. But we did make some nice gains in EDA testing for the children before we went out. That surrounds all the data part, so it made the school improvement plan a little different this year. So, one of the things that we kind of stopped in spring to do was to build our reentry plan at the elementary and about how we were going to bring children back, and then what academic pieces scheme with that. So, it's really great that we have these lofty goals in academics, but if we have no children there, that really doesn't help us. So, we've all discovered that we spend a lot of time dealing with COVID-related things this year, so that we're very intentional about the two new pieces that we have, which is Oregon Dillingham for grades K-1 and 2, which is a phonics-based program that we train all of the elementary teachers on their own time, and those grades that we need to learn about. So, all the elementary schools are doing that and finding it to be very, very positive. And that was through the Rooney Foundation, I believe, helped us with the funding on that. They've been awesome to work with. So, we are very excited about that as one of our academic pieces. And then our new reading series is kind of tag teaming in there with the Oregon Dillingham, and just a little more rigor with that program, and helps us get to some of the goals we need to meet. So, we're looking to be pretty on target with those two pieces when I-Learn finally comes back around for us at the elementary level. One of the other things we picked pretty well is the social-emotional piece. When the children were home a lot on their own, it was a little depressing for them and the teachers. And so, we're kind of working through that and trying to build more of a community piece with the children that are at school. So, one of the things we've got to practice when we actually talk was all of our Chromebooks that we purchase and deploy through the district. If we have classrooms going out in quarantine, and we've had a few of those, or a lot of children on isolation to COVID, we've been sending some of those Chromebooks home. We're just experimenting with the teachers are getting online, getting homework that way, just working individually with the parents. You want a package, you want a Chromebook, how you want to do this. So, that's been kind of nice that we've been able to experiment something with that. So, outside, just very different in the schools with COVID. We've had some really good things started this year. So, anything to add, guys? A little different.
Questions on the elementary plans that...
Do you, I have a question. Do we have, has there even been any talk about what, you know, spring testing is going to look like?
Other than I-Learn coming back and how we do that for our children that are electing to e-learn, we're just kind of figuring it out as we go.
And the assumption from the state is that we're full steam ahead, doing these things as planned?
Yes.
Yes.
And how that actually looks?
Currently, they are planning to do the I-Learn test, that we're going full steam ahead as if that's going to happen. As our other formative assessments that we're doing, we can do those virtually. The I-Learn test is not one that they will not allow. Say, I-read tests are ones that they will not allow us to do virtually. They must be done in person. So, you know, we'll have to work through that when we get there. So, yes, the plan is still to have it. We'll see. We'll see. But that's the plan is to still have it right now.
And we're all running intervention groups, working with children. It's just a little slower, a little more intense, and all of the things. Thank you. Thank all of you.
Junior high's improvement plan, if, I'll give that for our two junior high administrators. If you can see in the first part of their plan, they have a summary of the, of the breakdown of their student population. And just so that you kind of get a comparison, the previous year, white population is down 1, the black population is up 2%. Hispanic population is up 2% from previous year. Multiracial is down 1, Asians up 2 from the previous year. Special education is about the same. English as a second language is the highest growing, and that's about 3% higher than it was previous year. And the free and reduced lunch is about 1% up. So, you know, you always start with what is it you, that you had the previous year and results. And like Dr. Wolf said, the problem is, we don't have results from the previous year. So, it's really hard to develop a plan based on previous year's data when they're, the data that you have is what data that you've, your formative assessments you've created. So, the junior high summary of data is from the 2018-19 I-Learn results. And the 2018-19 I-Learn results showed that, you can see there, the language arts performance and the math performance. Those numbers are something that we're not used to seeing in Speedway. But if you look at the state average, we're about 18% and 20% above what the state averages were. And if you looked at growth, our growth was up, again, significantly compared to what, what the state average growth was. So, our goal, the goals of the junior high for the improvement plan is, we have adopted, we were using a formative assessment, 3 through 8 in Speedway called Renaissance, with star reading and star math. And star reading and star math was no longer supported by the state. So, we need to change our formative assessment throughout the district. And in grades 3 through 8, they're using a new, a new assessment called Cambium or Clear Sight, which is, which is exactly the same format as what the I-Learn test is on. And in the junior high, they are piloting along with the high school, NWA. So, the junior high's got two formative assessments going on right now to, to see if they can find out where kids should be and what they can do to help. And they're using NWA and Alex, NWA and Clear Sight and Cambium. Their goal is to, as always, is to improve kids' abilities in math comprehension and reading comprehension. The third goal is interesting, and that is, they've always had a goal about student attendance. And the DOE definitely told us this past year that we could not have any incentives for attendance. A lot of schools would have incentives, like ribbons at the elementary level or special events for some of the secondary students. And the DOE, rightfully so, said, "We would like everybody to stop those so that we don't get kids coming to school possibly sick." So, the goal to get to 97% attendance rate is probably not a very realistic goal in terms of what they'll be able to achieve this year in student attendance. So, that's the junior high school improvement plan. Any questions with that? Understand that this is something that the state requires us to do every year. So, it's a whole lot easier when you've got previous year data that you can compare to, to right now. But there, you know, the testing did not take place last fall, so previous year data is not available. Now, our high school.
Evening, everyone. Very similar to the other levels. When you look at our data at the high school, when you look at I-Step, that is obviously 2 years old now. We did not have it last spring. So, we are still going off of 2019 data in regards to I-Step. However, obviously, we do have updated data from last year in all other areas, such as our advanced placement testing, grad rate, diplomas, et cetera. So, if you go through or look over our, our high school school improvement plan summary, we, we really focused on our three goals, which is really what drives everything that we do at the high school. So, I'll just briefly touch on those and then also touch on some of the things that we do to try to help accomplish the goals that we set. So, goal one for us is to maintain a grad, graduation rate of 96% or above. And then within that, we have sub-goals. Sub-goal one is, within three years, we want 70% or more of our graduates to receive an honors diploma. Within that same timeframe, we want 98% of our students receiving at least a Core 40 diploma. So, if you look at the chart there below, you can see our honors diploma right now. Last year, we had 55% of our students graduate with an honors diploma. That's the highest it's been. And then we add the honors diploma and the Core 40s together to get our total, which currently sits at 96, and that's what we want to see grow to 98%. Then we also want to maintain our course failure rate at 2% or below throughout this. And kind of like Mr. Disney said, we did leave attendance on here, obviously, because these sub-goals are more long-term. However, obviously, this year with COVID, that kind of throws a little bit of a wrench in our attendance, as well as a little bit of everything else, because a lot of these things are driven, and why we focus on attendance in the other years, because we've shown that the more time that we can get our students in front of our teachers, the better they perform academically. And obviously, there's a whole lot of things going on this year with keeping kids out of school, where those that are opting for e-learning are kind of throwing a little bit more challenge, throwing more challenges at us than at our, our teachers. But they are working very hard to overcome those. Couple things that are initiatives that we have that kind of focus in these areas. This last year, we started, every freshman coming into the high school, we start on a track towards a honors diploma. And that is either academic honors or technical honors, depending on what the student's interests, interests are. And through that initiative, we're hoping to see that honors diploma percentage continuing to climb. That also helps set up, even those students that throughout their high school career, they fail to meet the requirements, the honors diploma, they're automatically then on, on, on track for the Core 40. For our course failures, one of the big things that we have done that has really helped drive that percentage down and keep it down is our, our philosophy that any work that is assigned in our classroom by our teachers must be completed by students. And that is ran through our study tables program, which has had a huge success in not only getting work completed by our students, but also increasing the learning that is taking place inside our classrooms and out. Goal two, we want to have at least 60% of our graduates pass at least one advanced placement AP exam, a qualifying score is 3 or higher during their high school years. Last year, we were at 51% of our graduates passed an AP exam. Our current seniors are already at 52%, so we've already surpassed that. But obviously, we want to continue that growth. Sub-goals with that, within three years, we want 95% of our graduates to take and successfully complete at least one AP course when they're here with us. And then, in the same timeframe, we want 70% of all of our graduates as a whole and by subgroup to earn at least one qualifying score. And then, within three years, we want 85% of our graduates to have learned, to earn at least a 2, want at least one AP exam, with the idea that research has shown that even those students that don't earn a qualifying score, they're in the AP program, especially those that earn at least a 2 on exams, are still getting, are still performing better in college than those who don't. And then, we, we also want to increase the average number of exams taken and passed by at least 20% for graduates as a whole and by subgroup. And that, that data is broken down on page 2. Kind of shows you where we are now, where we, where we came from since, or the growth in all of those areas since 2016. And it also gives you an idea of where the state is as an average. A lot of this is driven by our instructional practices inside our classroom. Without going into great detail, we have a philosophy that we are continuously trying to increase the rigor and viability with, within all of our courses and classes at the high school, based on what that means is. We continue to find ways to ratchet up the expectation and the level of rigor of the instruction, while at the same time, making sure that we are also putting in supports that our students need to be successful at achieving those higher expectations as well as achievement. Last goal, again, this is based off the 2019 I-Step data. We want to have at least 90% of our students who are past status on the English 10 I-Step and 75% on the Math 10 I-Step by the end of their junior year. This year will be taken by juniors. It'll be for accountability, like it has been in the past. The only difference is, it's juniors taking instead of sophors. Sub-goals there, even though this is the last year that I-Step is given at the high school, we want 95% of our students to pass both I-Step exams by the end of their senior year. So, if they don't get through it that first time, making sure that we are remediating and then getting them to pass before they leave us. And then, 100% of our graduates that don't pass I-Step successfully complete a graduate pathway. Those came in a few years ago from the state, and it's something that, again, that we start, and again, it ties into having students start on track to earn an honors diploma. That also helps with their pathway as they get into their junior, senior year as well, if they haven't passed the I-Step exam. This is there. The pride, one of the biggest is our plug time, which is our 25 minutes Tuesday through Friday that we use for remediation and enrichment. And those, and that actually is school-wise, we've, our AP teachers utilize it in the same manner. But for I-Step, our math and English teachers are giving regular formative assessments in their classrooms, and then identifying students that don't master whatever their current objectives are for that lesson or unit. And those are brought into our plug time remediation, and we taught those and then reassessed. That is, in a nutshell, high school school improvement.
No, I don't have a question. And I do want to say just thank you for sharing that, all of you. And I think, you know, sometimes we have such quantifiable data like this at the high school level that, you know, my mind can literally, not literally, can figuratively be blown. It's just, it's just amazing, I mean, that the job you guys are doing. And then, when we see, you know, we see exactly where that came from, that if we didn't have, I'm going to get emotional. If we didn't have this stuff going on in our elementary schools that feeds into what's happening in our junior high. I mean, it's just, it's just not being done anywhere else. And it's just, you know, I've talked to you guys, and we know. I know. I mean, I was just telling, you know, my colleagues that for the first time ever in decades, I am not really enjoying teaching as much this year. It is so hard. And so, I mean, I, we know that that's what, you know, is, we know that that's real. And so, you know, just thank you, please thank your teachers for us and, and, you know, send it down, that we are just so appreciative, that we're proud that we are, have real, you know, in-face teachers, in-face kids, and, and it's working. And we're, you know, we're really, it's just impressive. Just thank you, guys.
To tag along with Laura, hearing you all say that you're tagging into the social-emotional piece for the kids, you know, your, your staff and students, it's really important right now. I fully appreciate that.
It is, it is super hard to juggle all of that. And to keep the expected rigor and what we're used to and where we want to stay and all of that, it's very hard. And it seems like, like we're, we're doing it. And so, again, it's just super impressive. And hard when you're sitting here and you can't see a smile or can't see a, you know, so.
One of the things I might add to this is you're seeing one page somewhere. And I asked you to put it on one page, and these are several pages thick of data that gone through, and the terms that come to my mind are, this is intentional, it's deliberate. They take a look at things, they, they plan things for the future for the kids of Speedway so that they can be successful. It's not an accident. I mean, it's, they take stuff and take it and, and see what they, and what's interesting, it may be different at Fisher than it is at, at Newby or Wheeler or Als. Each one of those schools, school improvement plans change based on their population. And so, I agree with you. It's just incredible work, incredible work.
Thank you so much.
As we transition, let me say this. You have the data, you have the goals, you have the plans. But let's not lose fact that we have exceptional leadership. We have exceptional leaders, exceptional teachers, and we have this thing called the Speedway culture. And it's all fine and dandy, all the numbers. But the bottom line is, we have teachers with great relationships with our kids, and that moves the needle every single day. We couldn't be prouder of you guys. And I'm proud to say this too, please exit the boardroom at this time. So, you can go spend time doing whatever you may do, but enjoy this time off. I thank you for coming here, and we really are proud and we appreciate everything you guys do.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Yeah. She needs to take care of you. No more riding the bike. You, you have to stay. You may sit down. As President.
Okay, we are on to agenda item number six, which is to present security procedures regarding standardized testing.
The, years ago, we used to roll out tests, we'd get tests, and we'd get state tests. We'd grade them, and, or they would be graded by the state and given back to us. And we would go through a thing saying, "These are, make sure you cover your paper, make sure that someone beside you is not looking." That was the extent of our, our testing security. Have things changed? The, the Indiana Department of Education requires me, as the corporation test coordinator, to go through training. I got to pass a test with that, that training. As a corporation test coordinator, I have to train our, our principals, who are called school test coordinators. And I have to document that they were at a meeting. It's almost like, speaking to a lawyer, it's almost like it's, you know, a chain of evidence that says you were in this meeting and, and you heard what I, I said you can and can't do. And they, in turn, have to train our teachers. And what you're seeing in this document in your packet is our local test security policy. And this is something that's suggested by the Indiana Department of Education. And it's basically the procedures to go through as far as testing is concerned. And this, when, when our school test coordinators go over this with our staff, again, they have to have a, they have to have a document that says they were in attendance when they did this. And then, they go over it this time of year with them, and they will go over them again, they must go over it again, and re-take attendance right before they give the test, which in most cases will be in the spring, except for the high school, which will be doing some here in early November. Is that correct? Or late November? What is the I-Step test? Is that, I don't have it in front of me. Is that late November?
The pre-test, early, late November or early December?
Yep, yep. Yes. So, there's also another document they need to sign. Everybody in our school corporation, from our teachers to our administrators to the secretaries, it's called a local test security integrity agreement. And basically, it says, everyone signs this, says, "If you saw something that looked inappropriate, that you would let me know as a corporation test coordinator, and I would let the state know." So, I think it's important for the board and the community to know that these test security procedures are in place and that we take it very serious, and it's... And it's a lot different than it used to be 10 or 15 years ago in terms of test security. So as you read through that, if you have any questions over our less local test security policy, this was, basically they gave us a format that we come up with and we can change some things based on how we do it in Speedway compared to other schools.
Thank you. The next item is a report on COVID-19.
The current confirmed cases since August 5th, that was a Wednesday, 2020 is 10 for Speedway School Corporation here. It has not changed since the last communication that we sent out to the community. And we are on fall break right now. So we have a little bit of a break and, and I'm going to turn this over to John, Mr. Disney here in just a second. But just to let the community know that we are protocols, our safety protocols, that when we come back, we're going to touch, refresh everybody when we first enter the building again, all the principles, because sometimes we forget, we become complacent and that's the last thing we want to do. So I just want to confirm to everyone that when we come back next Monday, we're going to make sure that all the, all the people, all human beings in general, that we're back on track, wearing our masks and doing the best we can on our social distancing. So I just want to say thank you to the students and staff and leadership again in the community. Everywhere I go, it's a little different. If you leave Marion County, if you're at an athletic event, sometimes you see masks, sometimes you don't. Sometimes when you're here, we have to remind people over and over again, that's not a pleasant thing for our administration team to do, but that's what we have to do. I think we always can get better, but I just want to thank everybody for this so far. The protocols and the safety procedures that we have in place are working. We have a total of 10, in my opinion, of confirmed cases. And because of the good leadership and the teachers and the students of following embodied by our rules, we haven't seen a lot of spread, at least to my knowledge, in our buildings itself. So Mr. Disney at this time is going to talk a little, little bit about the virtual learning, e-learning.
Yeah, but if I could speak just a second on the confirmed cases, then we'll get to the, that is that there's one, as you can see, one teacher, one staff member, eight students. And then you, there's 186 students that we have quarantined because they've been considered close contact with someone that's considered a confirmed positive, and that's an important term, confirmed positive. So if you're close contact, you must stay away from school for 14 days. We do everything in our power to try to keep those, those students up to date. We do that several different ways, speaking of e-learning. One of the ways is they can get on our current e-learning and watch those recorded videos of teachers that are teaching at those grade levels. Sometimes we send home packets of information for our students to keep up with and because some of our students don't have internet at home and can't do the e-learning from home. And sometimes we have teachers that will record themselves teaching a lesson and try to keep students up that way. So there's, there's not one size fits all when it comes to trying to keep these students that we're quarantined up to date. And as soon as the 14 days are over, they come back and, and we do our best to try to catch them up. Our e-learning, we started the school year with roughly about 182, 183 students that chose e-learning as an opportunity to come to school with us. It, it went to its highest at 221 students that, that were choosing e-learning. And currently, as of end of the day Friday, we had 100, our nine weeks, our first quarter of our school year ended the Friday prior to fall break. So we had a week of our new nine weeks. And then we have, during that time, we have students that chose to come back to face-to-face learning. And we have 144 students in Speedway currently that are enrolled in our e-learning classes. We'll continue to, to offer e-learning and face-to-face learning throughout the school year. We've asked that our high school students, once they choose that, stay out for the semester. It's so much easier to, to do that with our, with our credits in the high school level. At the K through eight level, we have allowed students to, that were on e-learning to come back. And we'd like them to do that at quarter breaks if possible, but we understand that was a difficult decision for parents and it's still a difficult decision for parents. So we're offering all of the options that we can to keep our, our students learning. Questions with what's going on with COVID?
I think my biggest concern is the, the, you know, kid who's out for the 14 days. So I think, you know, if you're here in person, you're, you know, we got a program. If you're online, we got a program. Are we comfortable that it may not be the same program? And maybe that's appropriate because it needs to be individually assessed, but are we, are we, is there anything else we need to be doing? Are we comfortable with what we're doing with those? I mean, two weeks is a long time.
Yes, yes, it is. And the answer to that question is, is that we have, we've definitely changed along the way. Our original thought when we first rolled out our plan was to say that we are taping our grade level teachers in the elementary on math and language each day. And if a student was out, was quarantined, they could, we would share with them the time that those videos were, were accessible to the, to the families. There are some families that didn't want to do that. They, they, we would prefer to have learning packets. They didn't feel comfortable with the technology, the students didn't feel comfortable with technology. So we've gone through learning packets. I, I will share with you that the, there's a lot of stress that teachers are under to try to keep those, those students up to date the best they can. And I really wish there was one program that you said, boy, if you did this, this would work. But there, I think those programmers are as individualized as our kids and our students. And that is what works in one family may not work for the next. And it is a lot of work and I applaud our teachers. I've seen tears from our teachers. I have seen, you know, excitement from our teachers of what's going on, frustration about not being able to meet with them and see them on a daily basis. So it, it is definitely a very stressful year for the, not only the parents, but for the students and the teachers to try to keep them, keep them going in the right direction. But I, like Dr. Trevally said it earlier, I think we probably do it as good as anybody around as far as trying to keep our kids going in the right direction. We will continue to look at that and see if there is a better mousetrap, better way to do that. What I do like about it though is there isn't one way and that's the only way. You know, there is, you do have options when that happens. And hopefully, hopefully the number of times will start diminishing.
Are we, I know that in the summer, we talked about the Google classrooms and that being our, you know, across the district management system. Is that, is that work, I mean, is that what we're using? Is it working? Is that?
Yes. Every one of our teachers from K-12 is using Google Classroom as a learning platform. If we had to go virtual, I think we're ready for our teachers to start using Google Classroom as a way to administer work, collect work. And then a way to communicate with the students of what is, what is needed, what is, needs to be returned. And that, you got to keep in mind though, that there are some students that don't have internet. So that's still going to be an issue with them. And, and I think no matter what, we're eventually going to have to have learning packets going to be available. Like I said at the very beginning of this thing, we started rolling out Chromebooks. We're not going to be as good on the first day as we will on the last day. We'll continue to get better. We are the, next week, you know, October the 26th to the 28th, we're working with CIESC. They're coming in, talking with our elementary coaches who will then turn around and talk to our elementary teachers about the latest and greatest in online learning. They're also took a survey with our high school teachers and our junior high teachers about what is it that we, what's your frustrations, what are the things that are going on with you right now, what can we help you with? We just received that results from that survey and we're going to take that survey and start offering classes, classes, we're offering workshops for our teachers to help them with, how do you create the best video? How do you assess online? How, how do you work with a kid that's reluctant? You can't get them to participate? So all those are things that we're taking a look at and what can we do to come, get better with that? So between now and, and our holiday break, our teachers will have opportunities to improve themselves with those, with those workshop opportunities here on our campus.
A related question, and this may be, what are, have we made any progress on the hotspot issue?
We have not received them still from the GEAR grant that we received, but we are still working on that. I know the public libraries, Speedway Public Library does have hotspots and some of our students have tapped into that. But when that comes, when that day comes, we'll, we'll make sure that we're going to be prepared for that.
And again, that just seems to me something that the town can potentially hop into and be a part of.
Right? Yep.
Just saying.
That could be the next rip line, really, is connectivity for the students. But right now, we have not heard much even with all these numbers as of yet. I know my internet at home slows down a lot between four and six o'clock.
It's crazy, isn't it?
I'm sure all the kids are at home doing their homework, that's why. Or Netflix.
It's always good to unmute.
Yes. Anything else?
Anyway, I'll say that again, we are still working on the connectivity with the hotspots, with the, with the grants that we are involved with all Marion County schools. So just that was, that's what I was saying underneath the mask muted, so, but thank you.
Thank you, John. Yep. Okay. The next item gives me incredible pleasure. It is the recognition of the United States Department of Educational, of Education National Blue Ribbon School Award. Wow. Awesome. Awesome.
What up, Mr. Zartman? Ladies and gentlemen, this is, what a great accomplishment. This award from the U.S. Department of Education, from the, the highest award you can get from the, from the national level as a National Blue Ribbon School. And Speedway High School has accomplished this. This is because of our high graduation rate and high achieving students, top 15% across the country in English and math from measured state assessments. This is the best of the best. Go back two years ago, one school in Indiana received this award, a school in Hendricks County. Last year, I believe zero, and this year, there's only two schools in Indiana that accomplished this. Heron High School, then Speedway High School. And today, we have Mr. Zartman, the principal, that's going to give us some information about how we received this and some specifics with this. So congratulations, Mr. Zartman and your staff.
Thank you. It was mentioned earlier, but I would like to publicly thank the elementaries and the junior high. Like was discussed earlier, we wouldn't be able to accomplish the things at the high school that we were, that we are without the things that they are doing on a daily, daily basis with the students that eventually come to us. So obviously, this was a high school award, but definitely earned by all the schools in the district. In terms of how we got here, kind of what Dr. Trevally discussed, it starts off with your, your performances reviewed by the state or all, all schools in the state are reviewed by the DOE and you must be in the top 15% as a whole in your math and English performance on the I-Step. And then you also have to be in the top 40% for each subgroup, those broken down by ethnicity and free reduced lunch, et cetera. And we were actually the top 3% in each of the subgroups that were broken out. And then top 15% in your high school graduat- graduation, graduation rate. And then once the DOE reviews all the schools in the state, they then nominate those that qualify to the National Department of Education. And from there, you are contacted, you have to fill out a, a very long application. I think Mr. Disney's had to do one of these as well. We took it as a group effort. We had our, our teachers and staff participate in putting together all different things that went into writing that application and submitted that to the Department of Education. And then after that, we wait for quite a while. And then we were fortunate to get the official word here about two months ago that we were selected and we, we had to sit on it for a little while until they came out and made the announcement official. So it was, you know, it, it's very nice to see our, our teachers pour their heart and soul into what they do every day in our classrooms and the relationships they build with our students to just the, the amazing things that, that they are able to accomplish. And to see them recognized in this manner is, is definitely something that I am very appreciative of because they, they, anybody in education knows that you don't always get the, the recognition you deserve as a teacher in the classroom. And ours are by far the best I've ever worked with and I think this is a testament to that.
So he talked about subgroups for a second. Am I on live here? And I'm on your school improvement plan here, but I'm going to quiz you. Are you ready? I'll help you out here. When you talk about the subgroups, that's really where you break down into everything we do on data and data-driven. Of course, we have the relationships, but you really have to, and Mr. Zartman and Mr. Clayburn, Mr. Borm, they all do a tremendous job looking at ELC groups, which is another reason why that's so important, that we know where our kids are. You got to know where you know where you know where they're at, period, or you're not going to move the needle. So number one, our ELL group, English Language Learner, so students that are coming to us that sometimes can't even speak English. How did we finish in the state? Because this is where it really comes from, the subgroups of our ELL from the state assessments and the high school.
Our ELL students outperform everyone else in the state.
So not just Marion County, you're talking about from, okay, Michigan to Kentucky thing. All right, first in the state. Our black population, how do we finish?
We were number two in public schools, third overall.
Again, and you're talking state, not just Marion County, the whole state. Hispanic population?
Fourth, state-wise.
Okay. Free and reduced lunch students?
We were number one in public school, fifth school overall.
Fifth overall in the state. Our special ed population?
Third in public schools and seventh overall in the state.
Okay. Our white population?
Fifth in public schools and eighth overall in the state.
Now, just knowing that you have some principals to your left, former high school principals, I think I was one of them, Mr. Smith was the other one. If you even go back to 16, folks, we're in the hundreds in all of those. And we moved to, let's just say, top 10 in each of our subgroups. Because you got to know, you got to know, you got to know where your kids are. And it's a K through 12 problem that we have. It's called a good problem. It's called the Speedway culture that we have established here. Can't be more proud of you than that. Overall, our population, if you want to see what Speedway schools in general, 1,802 students at this point in time. We're at 42% population of our, of, of white population, 28 black, 18 Hispanic, 12% other. Mr. Disney talked about this earlier on, our junior high numbers are, are increasing and that's what we see overall in all of our schools now. It's, it's more diverse than ever and we're so proud of everything we're doing by encouraging them. The answer to where we need to go is through education, period. Let's put a great teacher in front of kids and let them go to work. And that's what we do each and every day. And that's a testament to this for the last many, many years to get to this point. Again, only two schools in the state of Indiana accomplished this Blue Ribbon School. Last year, we had zero. The year before, Indiana had one. So this is a great accomplishment that all people have done for that and be proud of for that. Final comments and then we'll open up the discussion.
Again, just want to thank, this is definitely a team effort that starts all the way up to the top and, and spreads out even to the community support and to get on a daily basis. So again, I just want to thank everyone that's involved in everything that we do at the high school.
We will have banners, they're being printed right now. We're going to have a lot of award ceremonies for this and make sure we celebrate the appreciation of the whole corporation, including starting with you guys right here in front of me. So thank you guys for allowing us to do our jobs. because it's a lot of fun when you can get awards like this for the kids. Can we go around and have just a few comments if you'd like? Mr. Bickle, are you still there?
I am. I just, I want to thank all of the teachers and all of the administrators involved in this. This is a recognition of effort. And we talk about that with our students all the time, is we want to see that effort and see that improvement. And this is a recognition of that. And I know that the whole community is proud of you for this.
And I would echo Luke's comments. I have a question. When do you go to Washington, D.C.?
Just our luck, thanks to COVID, they are not doing the Washington, D.C. in-person ceremony this year. Instead, they are doing it virtual. So I will be doing it in my office or somewhere here in the high school in November.
Wow. So what year was it at the junior high?
2006.
2006, so it's been a little bit. I can remember that year. And that was exciting because they were, we were able to have dignitaries here. And sadly, we, you know, this is a different year, but not any less monumental for our town and for the school. So we, again, hats off to everyone.
I think that, you know, Dr. Trevally and I were talking about this when we met earlier this week, that we are, we Speedway are pretty used to seeing banners up and, oh, the school got this and the school got that. And, you know, I mean, we get to the point where we're putting, you know, again, on a banner because it's just, you know, every time we turn around. But it just needs to be stated and understood that this is, this is a big deal. This is, you know, not some, oh, one of those crazy things that everybody gets. No, this is huge. And so I just, I just really want, you know, the town to understand the magnitude and just, just be able to, you know, be proud of that and be a part of that because it is part of our culture here. This fabulous job.
I'd also like to express my appreciation of the caring, the time and the effort that the K through 12 teachers and administration put into our children. And it's evident in everything that we do, but it's especially evident when we are measured against our peers. And I thank you for it.
Well, this time, I will dismiss Mr. Zarman. Go back to work or do whatever you do. Thank you, Mr. Zarman.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is to acknowledge grants, which I have lost track of. Do we have, do we have? 308,74145 in grants. That's awesome. Thank you. Next is the personnel report.
Five items on this month's personnel report. We have two resignations, Linda Stevens, who was a cafeteria worker, Caleb Pennington, who was a seventh grade boys' basketball coach for us. And then we have three recommendations for employment. One of those is Madeline Ilolo. Madeline is taking disability leave in band and choir. Margaret Lambert, Peggy Lambert, who may recognize that name. She was cafeteria work for us in the spring, but she resigned her position due to COVID. And now that things are a little bit under control, she is coming back to us, which we're happy to have. And then the third is Sam Ahrens. And Sam has been helping us here as a substitute teacher at the high school. And he is going to be our eighth grade boys' basketball coach. My recommendation is to approve the personnel report as presented.
First pleasure?
I'll move that we approve the personnel report as presented.
Okay, in discussion? All in favor of approving the personnel report indicate by raising your hand. All opposed, and that passes 5-0. So now that all of our visitors have been dismissed for the night, we have no visitors. Do we have any other business, Dr. Trevally?
That is all.
Okay, then we will adjourn to sign minds.